The Town Council regular meeting for January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Order. Let everybody in, Dustin.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Counselor Schoen.
Yeah, I'm muted, Ken.
I'm not in the meeting yet, so I can't see you.
Got it. Present.
All right, very good. Counselor Schoen, present virtually. Counselor Mellon. Counselor Gardner.
Present.
Present in person. Counselor Tulowitsky.
Present virtually.
Virtually, and President Kulturitis.
Present.
Very good.
I'll bring us to a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. At Fledge of Allegiance, Senator.
United States of America. For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible. And justice for all.
All right, that brings us to the Forty-Fifth Street construction update. Lee, are you on?
Yes, this is Lee Randall with DLZ. Can you hear me? All right, excellent. All right, so update. Last week, we did some additional temporary pavement markings on Forty-Fifth Street between Calumet and Southwood. Our initial efforts had worn off a little bit. So they did restripe that with additional paint. So far, those are still looking well. Additional construction, we have the Camellia Alley. Construction and Wall Four backfill are ongoing. The bike path construction is ongoing, although not currently. Lift station construction is also ongoing. The subcontractor, Grimmer, is working with the developers. Design team DVG and working on an easement for the secondary gas service for the lift station itself. On Old Forty-Fifth. Storm sewer is expected next week to resume. That's between Columbia and Wall Four, so just that west side of the underpass. And then acceleration wise, we're still holding at an estimated three hundred thousand. That's still pending. Some certified payroll that are outstanding and potentially some winter protection costs. The Centennial Village Development Contractor is installing the water main, including a casing bore underneath CN this week. So that is directly west of the underpass. So essentially between existing Forty-Fifth there at Centennial Village up to Old Forty-Fifth directly north. So with that, if there are any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions for Lee?
Hi, Lee. This is Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Not sure if this is a question for you or the town, actually, but after the underpass was open, there was an accident that took out one of the light poles. Is there? What's the plan for having that replaced?
Yes, we've obtained the police report regarding that. So the contractor and subcontractor who is Hawk who installed that will work with that insurance company of that driver. And then obviously replace that, that luminaire. So the entire light pole and luminaire itself there.
Okay, and any idea when that will be completed or is that a legal, caught up in a legal issue?
Well, I don't know. That's more of a legal issue. It's probably more of a timeline issue as far as ordering and obtaining that replacement luminaire. In most cases, and I don't know if that's true at this time of the year, but it's usually about a three week lead or three month lead time, excuse me. Hopefully, it's not that long, but potentially.
Okay, thanks for that, Lee.
Certainly, thank you.
Any other questions? She's having technical difficulty. Is she in yet or no? If she's just trying to set herself. All right. That will bring us to open to the public. One person. Who would go open person? Public comment is number two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for group spokesman. Please keep your comments. So about constructive to public policy issues. Shared sole discretion may recognize individuals wishing to speak on different topics at any time may end the open to the public session. I'll speak if it will be timed by the correct pressure. This portion of the meeting shall not exceed twenty minutes. There anybody that wishes to speak, please pump up your podium, state your name and your address. Any one online in questions this week? Nope, great, I will.
I did get one just note with someone returned a note with their Waterville, and they said, thank you for the beautiful lights at Town Hall this year.
All right, I will close the open to the public. That brings us down to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Ken.
All righty, any discussion?
Yeah, I just had one question. This is Steve, Mr. President. The, I wanted to confirm the AJ Gallagher Risk Management Services, the five hundred forty-nine thousand. What premium that is that we're paying at this time?
That the coverage that you authorized me to bind in December for property casualty and workers' compensation.
Okay, so it's PNC and workers' comp. Is that the annual, that's the full annual premium?
We also have specific lines of coverage for environmental coverage and the clubhouse as well, so.
Okay. The clubhouse is also in that total, Dustin? All right, thank you for the clarification.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Vote yes. Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon is here, but she was unmuted.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And you're virtual and the time is one oh seven oh nine. Okay. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
For Gardner voted yes. Counselor Tulowitsky.
Yes.
Voted yes. And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five zero consent agenda passed.
Thank you. There are, there is no old business at this time. Then we'll just do new business. We will be moving up. Item D. First, since we had Lee on the line, so we will start with the Forty-Fifth Grade Separation Change Order Number Twenty-One.
Thanks. This is a change order that asks the authorization to pay a difference in price to use Indiana Crush Stone rather than the Indiana fifty-three air-cooled furnace slag. And the issue is, as I lay out in the memo, it was a timing issue. So we by the time that the CN committed that they would come and move their track off of the shufly to the main line. That is necessary to excavate the eastern portion of Forty-Fifth that went from Southwood to the underpass. Can't do that until the train moves. Train can't move until the structure is done. Well, the structure was done, but you had to backfill the voids because there was space around the structure. Now, we had originally called for Indiana fifty-three. And there was an availability issue once that, that ideal material was identified as the solution. So we could have either waited to get that material and then lost our window for the CN to come and move that track because they use special crews to do that. And that kind of just hanging out in Homewood, they go all around the Midwest. So we get a, we get a window. If we miss our window, we go to the back of the line. We go to the back of the line, the job doesn't get done. So a decision was made to substitute Indiana eights with fifty threes. From an engineering perspective, they act similar, same. And what it allowed us to do was deliver that project on time. So we're asking you to consider approving change order number twenty-one for in that contract B three six two two nine for a price of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-two cents.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just to comment, there's, in, in the notes for today's meeting, there is extensive documentation, email back and forth around this issue. And I just wanted to appreciate the diligence and work that is done to get the engineer of record to sign off on the materials and, and to consider the schedule. And material, like all this is very important, and I think it's just good to read through it and maybe if people out there who have comments about the underpass, this is a good example of just looking at what it takes for something very small due to schedule differences from the train, from the CN Corporation, et cetera. So it's kind of very well documented and appreciate all the work that goes, has gone into this already behind the issue. And I have no issue with the, with the cost.
Mr. President, I have two questions. Earlier estimates, Lee, said that this increase was going to be about twenty-one thousand dollars. Now it's about twenty-seven. Twenty-eight thousand. Is that just the additional amount of tonnage needed?
Yeah, that's based on the, the total tonnage that was placed. And in addition was the, the markup cost. So basically a twelve percent markup in that allows for materials.
Okay, thank you. And the other question kind of deals with the documentation. In one of the emails back and forth, it said that this Indiana AIDS was replacing in lieu of existing clay material. Is that? This was actually replacing different type of stone. That clay materials was additional excavation that was needed?
So, Lee, I'll, I'll, I'll give the layperson's answer and then you jump in with the technical, all right? It goes all the way back to the idea, the conversation we had about, well, we wanted to backfill it with the clay material. Everyone said fine until CN said, no, we've changed our mind. There's going to be settlement. We don't like that. Then there was, well, how about like a sixty forty split of stone and clay? And then, then it was decided, you know what? Just put a bunch of fifty threes in there. We're going to call it a day. So you're right, there was at one time contemplated using existing onsite clay material. And then when the CN balked at that original solution that they agreed to, there was a lot of discussion about mixing some kind of stone compacted base and then putting the clay material on top until it finally the solution there that would make everybody happy and keep us on, on, on target for the deadline was to just say, would you take stone?
Instead of the clay material?
Yeah. And then they said, yes, we will take stone. And that stone that was identified was the fifty threes. And then we came into the situation where we could not get those onsite fast enough. So then now we're here with the eights.
Was the change from clay to fifty threes, was that also an earlier change order then?
I believe it was.
Well, it will be. It's using an existing pay item, the B-borrow item that we have. So there will be overrun associated with that, which overrun and underrun change orders will be done at the end of the contract, basically to substantiate all of those.
Okay, so to justify or to reconcile the eight all that? Fine, I have no other questions.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Votes yes. Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Vote yes. Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero to accept the change order.
All right, and we're going to move back to A, which is the appointment of portfolio assignments for this year. I actually have been here for the portfolio assignments are listed. The president will be on, will be the president of the redevelopment commission. I will be the president of the police pension board. I will be on the nominating committee as necessary. I will be on the Munster Civic Foundation Board. I will be the liaison to the Munster School Board. Chuck Gardner, Vice President, will be the Vice President of Redevelopment Commission. He will be the President of the Munster Civic Foundation. He will be the liaison to the Board of Safety. He will be on the Plan Commission. Ken Schoen will be on Redevelopment Commission. He will be on the Munster Civic Foundation. He will be on the Lake County Solid Waste Management Board. He will be our liaison to the Park Board. Tulowitsky will be on the Redevelopment Commission as Secretary. He will be on the Plan Commission, on the Munster Civic Foundation Board. And he will be the Lake County Solid Waste Management Board also. Janon will be on Redevelopment Commission. She will be on the Munster Civics Foundation. She will be on the Board of Zone and Appeals as liaison, and she will be on the Plan Commission. Now, Wendy, that's a part of NERC. Does this have to be something separate or can I just say this along?
I think that that needs to be a motion and accepted.
Actually, there's no motion that needs to be made with the previous.
No, that's just, I believe the portfolios is just an awareness. And just to make you aware, there is, the Board of Safety meeting is on Thursday, not Monday or Tuesday, so don't show up then at seven PM.
AM.
AM. Yes.
AM.
All right, with that, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Wendy Miss as our NERC representative again for this year and in the, I don't believe that needs to be a yearly assignment. That's just, we're just, I just would like to appoint her to be our representative to the NERC board.
There's a second.
I'll second the motion.
All righty. This is going to be roll call, right?
Yes, please. Okay, Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Votes yes. Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky.
Yes.
Counselor, President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five zero, thank you.
That brings us down to the Munster Redevelopment Commission. Three members of the Munster Redevelopment Commission are appointed by Town Council President. Two are appointed by the Town Council as a whole. Each term of the MRC is for one year. As President, I will be appointing Counselor Mellon, Schoen, and Tulowitsky to the Munster Redevelopment Commission for the term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. At this point, at this time, I need the Town Council as a whole to appoint the other two members. I need a motion for that.
I make a motion to appoint Counselor Gardner and President Kulturitis to the Munster Redevelopment Commission.
Oh, seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Vote yes. Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky.
Yes.
Yes, and Dr. Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero. Thank you.
All right, that brings us down to the federal, federally mandated risk and resilient water assessment.
Yes, this is a piece of legislation that was passed in October of two thousand and eighteen in America's Water Infrastructure Act. Acts to require municipalities of various sizes to comply with emergency response plans and some resiliency work. So if you're a bigger city, your, your, your work is due here. If you're a mid-sized city, your work is due here. Our risk assessment is due June thirtieth of this year, and our emergency response plan has to be certified by the end of this year. This is the first time we have been required to do this because we're a city in a certain band that says this is the first time that we have to do it. We had a little bit of time, a little bit of runway. And I think it would be a good exercise to get this done with the help of our on-call engineer for the first time, create a system. So in the years in the future where we have to comply and recertify and resubmit, we can do that in-house. So my, my, my proposal is that you allow us to enter into an agreement with SEH of Indiana to complete this work for a lump sum of twenty thousand dollars.
Fair motion.
Mr. President, I'll move to authorize the town manager to enter, enter into an agreement with SEH of Indiana to comply with the American Water Infrastructure Act at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
I second the motion.
Fairly discussion. I have a question. Dustin, does the SEH kind of give you an idea that it's going to run about that much to do this?
Yes, it did.
Mr. President, I had a comment question. Or two questions, actually. First, well, the point of interest is, as we're doing this work, Dustin, if SEH does it, does this give us also a natural opportunity to come up with a plan for upgrading and maintaining our water lines? I know we often do reactive, you know, when the water mains break. But is this, with them doing this work, do we get a chance to get our hands around that?
I had asked that question to SEH. And the, the, as much as I would like the answer to be yes, the answer is no. Will they find out some interesting things about the water system? Yes, there, there may be service needs identified, but this isn't going to serve in lieu of a comprehensive master plan for the water system needs. So there will be invariably, when you, when you pop out of the hood, some things that you see that you're going to want to address. So could the outcomes from this be that you're going to find additional services needed or improvements identified? Certainly. But it is not going to be a holistic approach that you would base a potential rate adjustment on.
And thank you. And the other question I had was, you know, that surrounding municipalities, I assume of similar size, are going to be going through the same sort of activity is SEH also planning. Is there any economy, a scale of doing it together? Now we're, in fact, in relationship with some other communities in regards to to water lines. I'm just wondering if there was any thought to that? Or if there's a provider who specializes in the sense the act has gone in, in the last couple of years. Those were my points of interest more than challenges.
I don't know the answer to that question. I did not examine that, but I'd be happy to take this off and look at that if you'd like.
Well, I know that, you know, I looked at the schedule and there are some tight deadlines for this. The work needs to get done, but NXYG is on, maybe it's an idea or something for them to take off to other municipalities if they, you know, if, if there is any economy of doing multiple cities at, at once. And I suppose this is mostly hours driving the, the price tag. Here it's not materials or anything.
I would, I would say it's the, the hours of work involved in compiling the information rather than labor involved.
Okay. Well, we don't like to do things for extra regulation, but for sure, you know, water is essential, so it'd be good to have the emergency response plan and, and this assessment in place.
Agreed.
Agreed. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Votes yes. Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Vote yes. Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Votes yes. Counselor Tulowitsky.
Yes.
Vote yes. And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero approved.
That brings us to America in Bloom, CN ground up grant agreement.
The town has received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the CN Railroad. It's administered by an organization called America in Bloom. That's why it's called the AIBCN Eco Connections from the Ground Up Grant. This grant will fund some landscaping to be installed south of the Pennsy Greenway Trail and north of Centennial Village. It'll be along the CN Railroad tracks. It's a it's a program that's designed specifically for the communities through which the CN Railroad passes so that they can sort of beautify the corridors. As I said, the, the grant received by the CN is twenty-five thousand dollars. The total cost of our project that we're proposing is fifty thousand dollars. And so we're providing locally a fifty percent match. Half of that match is going to be provided by Centennial Village LLC, so the developer of the Centennial Village development. And the town's contribution towards the project will be twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. So we'll, we'll pay for one quarter of the project. Project is funded and it will be completed in two thousand and twenty-one. So in order to move forward, we would request that the council authorize the town manager to execute the grant agreement.
Thank you, Tom. Your motion.
I will move to authorize the town manager to execute an agreement with America in Bloom to receive a twenty-five thousand dollar CN Eco Connections from the Ground Up Grant.
Fair second.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Just appreciate the partnership from Centennial Village. It's nice to get fifteen thousand in landscaping for twelve thousand, five hundred. So appreciation from them and the CN.
Good job, Tom. You're finding the area that.
With regards to the, the area that's out there right now, there's some dirt piles and things like that. Is that part of Centennial Village or is that part of the Forty-Fifth Project?
Are you referring to the pile north of Forty-Fifth or south of Forty-Fifth?
There's, well, there's some on both sides.
Not. Well, it's not, but the, the answer is materially the same, but we can talk a little bit offline. It is not our dirt. I can tell you that. And the contract specifies that it's not our dirt, but there's a little bit more to talk about.
Is it good dirt at least?
It is dirt.
Okay, okay. But there's sometimes good.
It's.
Yeah. Okay, that's enough, so.
Yeah. It is, it is not unhealthy dirt. I'll say, I'll say that.
I will also add that placement of that there is not related in any way to this project that we're proposing here. Okay, roll call.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero to for the Cities of Bloom grant.
There are no reports for tonight. We're down to four. Do you have anything to report tonight?
I just wanted to make the announcement that the Board of Safety will be meeting this Thursday at seven AM.
Oh, Chuck, I'm sorry. You mentioned Board of Safety. Was it one other thing I noticed in the vouchers that the expenditure for the body cams went out, it looked like for this year? Are, are, do you have a status on that?
That will be updated at the Board of Safety meeting this Thursday.
Okay, sorry for doing that out of order.
I do have, I received an email from Mike McIntyre, who is the town's liaison, the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission. And he updated us on a few things, but I wanted to share that typically they have a summit every year. And last year, of course, because of the pandemic, they did not. So they're still considering a virtual summit in two thousand and twenty-one, and they'll have information to share with us for that. And they were also, they do the candidate's ethics action pledge, and the numbers there were very positive. And quite a few, it's encouraging to see that most of our candidates believe that ethics training is essential. So I appreciate the report from Mr. McIntyre.
Okay. That brings us down to announcements. All Town Council meetings will begin at seven PM unless otherwise noted. January twenty-fifth, there is no meeting. February first, regular Town Council Redevelopment Commission meeting. February eighth, no meeting. February fifteenth, regular Town Council Redevelopment Commission meeting. February twenty-second, no meeting. March first, regular Town Council Redevelopment Commission meeting. That brings us down to adjournment. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Admissed. Thank you for attending. All righty. Right in.
We can move right into seven thirty.
Is John online?
That is online.
I am, hello.
Great. I will bring the Redevelopment Commission regular meeting for January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Present.
Virtually, yes. Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Present, virtually. Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Tulowitsky.
Virtually present. Virtually present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
And I acknowledge Mr. Castro, our liaison to the school board, is here virtually as well.
Yeah. That brings us down to open to the public. Is there anybody that wishes to speak tonight? Open to the public. Next is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five zero consent agenda approved.
Thank you. There is no old business under new business. We have Maple Leaf Crossing Third Amendment to the Development Agreement.
This is the exact the same thing that the town council considered at the last meeting. And it is the exact same thing that the Economic Development Commission approved last Friday and has come to my attention